President of the Month, the highlight of Gilbert, Arizona. Thank you for coming. I am Mayor John Lewis. To my left, council members will be assisting with the program. Councilmember Jen Daniels, Councilmember Jordan Ray, Councilmember Victor Peterson, Vice Mayor Ben Cooper, Councilmember Eddie Cook, and Councilmember Jared Taylor. Let's hear it for the council. It is not yet Thanksgiving, but you can call this an appetizer, a pre-Thanksgiving event. And so we wanted to also let you know about some events that are coming up in the next few days and couple of weeks. One, until the first week of December, Street of Dreams. Individuals from all over the state of Arizona are coming to see five homes that are on display. And pay attention to ads and different things you see. You're invited to go see these Street of Dreams. Activities coming up. Rodeo is in town this week. Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The Gilbert Days Parade Saturday morning. And then you see that canceled. That was going to take place, but because of this thing called rain, they decided maybe not to do it. But the parade, rain or not, will go on. So bring umbrellas if you need to. And Nights of Light will be the first Friday in December, when we officially turn on the switch, where all of the holiday lights show up just to the north of this building. And then the Repairing After Dark is another activity coming up in December. You are invited to attend any of those. Flyers telling you about those activities are on the back table, right outside the doors. And we've got one other flyer there, but I'll tell you more about that in a few minutes. We go in groups of three tonight. And the first two groups are those in elementary. And it would be if your elementary school is from an A to J, the first letter in your school, you're group one. And group two would be K to Z. And then group three will be those in junior high and high school. You'll see the first two are bolded because we're going to, after the first two groups come forward, and we'll explain that in more detail, we're going to have a special guest. And after that special guest, then we'll have group three come. And then we start our town council meeting. And when the council meeting starts, could I have any of our teachers, school administrators, school board members that may be in the room, please stand? Keep standing for just a minute now. What I wanted to say to each of you, as you know, and as you're here to chair in our Student Citizens of the Month, they are our finest. And we commend them and want them to just continue to shine and be the great examples for us. But you are leading them, and we thank you. You are some of the most valuable assets in Gilbert. And on the screen, what you see is this council meeting tonight, our first agenda item after our invocation pledge, will be a proclamation. Some of you know this, we tried to get the word out, but if you're able to stay, we invite you to stay because we're going to have all of you come up when this proclamation is read, and then have each of you introduce yourself and what school you're part of. And if you can stay, that'd be great. If you can't, that's okay. But if you can stay, this is another chance to recognize you tonight, and we encourage you to stay if you can. Thank you, may be seated. So on with the show. Councilmember Daniels will get group one going. And if you happen to be in group one, that means you're in elementary school, and the first letter of your elementary school goes from an A to J. I'd like you to come on down right now and just stand right behind me. If you're an A to J, and... And what we're going to do is Councilmember Daniels will say your name and school, and we'll have you come up one at a time. We'll stand right here for a picture. And if parents or family members, school officials want to come down in this area and take a picture, you may. And then when everyone in the group is done, we'll do a group picture, and then they can be seated. So with that, we'll see how it goes. Councilmember Daniels, please.
Thank you, Mayor. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Tanner Hill.
Councilmember Daniels, I forgot to say that these pictures will be on display on our town website. And there's a little card at the back of the room that will tell you how to find access to all of this information, whether it's tweets, or websites, or Youtubes, or all the great things that Gilbert Digital does. Continue, please.
From Bios Christian Academy, Erin Arnt. From Burke Elementary, Chloe Arianna Simpson. This is Erin. Come on over here, Erin. Welcome. This is Chloe Arianna Simpson from Burke Elementary. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Dominic Armijo.
Notice those Shop Gilbert bags, aren't they great?
Yes.
For holiday season and shopping and...
From Highland Park Elementary, Katie Watson.
That's group one. So group one, what we do now, we're going to invite all of you to come stand right in this area, and we'll do a group picture together. And you've got your Shop Gilbert bags, and I think some of the activities we talked about, there are certificates and flyers, and so lots of good things. And this is where the entire council gets to be in this picture with you. Those in group one may be seated, but give them another big round of applause. Group two, if your elementary school, first letter begins from a K to a Z, please come on down.
That's hilarious.
Absolutely. Send her up right now.
Sure.
Guys, we're gonna have Lacy Frann go next. She's from Mesquite High.
We're coordinating real quick.
Coordinating is good.
And we would like to have Lacy Frann from Mesquite High School come down. And we're gonna give Lacy hers right now. She has a dance competition tonight, so we're gonna hurry up and help her get there. Win another award.
And Lacy, here's your Shop Gilbert bag, and you're about to get a big, big, big round of applause to wish you the best in that dance competition. Ready, one, two, three?
Nowhere else but Gilbert will you get that kind of happy treatment. So congratulations. Go for it, Lacy. All right, Mayor. Group two, from Leading Edge Academy, Kayden Titch. Smile, Kayden.
Last name?
Kiwis.
Kiwi.
Thanks for being patient with me, Elijah. From Pioneer Elementary, Emily Valerio Perez. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Shaket Saaji. From Power Ranch Elementary, Davin Allen. Should've gone with the first one. Should've gone with the instinct on that one. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Jacob Wilkes. From Spectrum Elementary, Savannah Mersett. And last but not least for this group, Mayor, from Val Vista Academy, Armani Williamson.
So group two, come on up in this area. We'll do a picture together. Group two, a big round of applause. Thank you. Before group three comes up, the special guest, and I noticed that his beard fell off about 15 minutes ago, but that's what happens after 150 years. We have someone, and it's not every day that we get to have a former President of the United States come to Gilbert. Do you remember who the President of the United States was 150 years ago? Abraham Lincoln. And 150 years ago, two days ago, and he was at the Gilbert Thanksgiving Interfaith Music Celebration. We invited him to come tonight. Abraham Lincoln has come to visit us. And two days ago was the 150th anniversary of the delivery of the Gettysburg Address. And so President Lincoln, could you tell us a little bit more about what happened, and maybe those famous 272 words?
Thank you, Mayor, and I would be pleased to. And you'll have to excuse, next February, I'll be 205 years old, and I've been trying to keep myself incognito, you know, so I've joined the modern people and shaved. But I tried to make myself look younger with a good black beard, but it didn't work. I apologize. As Mayor Lewis said, exactly 150 years ago, I'm trying to figure out which way is east from here, but 2,200 miles, almost to the exact mile from here, in a little backwater place called Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, I had the privilege of giving a short speech. The reason it was a short speech is because I was just invited to give kind of a dedicatory amendment to a two-hour-long program. The actual reason that we were there was to dedicate a new monument and a cemetery for some 8,000 soldiers who had died in a horrendous battle just four and a half months before. It was a very touching event for me personally. General Reynolds was one of my personal friends, and he had fallen not just a few feet from where we were assembled. The program lasted all day. I arrived the night before and stayed in the home of Davis Wills. People have said that I wrote the Gettysburg Address on the back of my envelope as I was sitting there listening to the other speakers, but that's not the case. I'd actually worked on about, for about, well, I about had half of it done before I came to Gettysburg. I completed it with the help of my Secretary of State that evening in the house of, in the Wills' house. But then, as I toured the grounds in the morning before the event, I was touched. And that's how come somebody claimed to have seen me writing something on a notebook or on an envelope, because I did make some revisions. Actually, there are several versions of the Gettysburg Address. And I actually signed one copy, and that's kind of become the official copy. But there's many, like I said, there's five. And I brought that official copy with me tonight to read it, because I don't want there to be a sixth copy running around. But the event of the actual dedication, it began with a prayer by Reverend Stewart. And I was touched. And then a Mr. Edward Evert stood for two hours and gave an oration. That was the real Gettysburg Address. You must think that that was kind of a long meeting, but actually, it was the kind of the equivalent of our movie star or our radio music person today. He was a great orator. And if it hadn't been for him, you probably would not have even realized what I had said that day, because he later wrote a book. He put his oration in it, and he asked me to include my short dedicatory statement. But I want to stress how deeply I felt that day as I walked among those freshly mounted And I hope as I re-say these words, that you will think of those graves and think of the words which I felt like that I was inspired to say. Although I didn't particularly like my speech, I guess many people did, although not everyone. There were several of my political detractors who actually called it silly. And it took them 150 years. This past week, there was an editorial finally in a paper that criticized me, and they retracted their criticism. But it took them 150 years. But if you will bear with me, fourscore and seven years ago, oh, and by the way, that's kind of a strange way of saying a date, but I often used the Bible as my text. And if you will read in Psalms 90, verse 10, you will find a similar date that was given. Fourscore and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth upon this continent a new nation, conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. Now we're engaged in a great civil war, testing whether that nation or any nation so conceived and so dedicated can long endure. We are met on a great battlefield of that war. We have come to dedicate a portion of that field as the final resting place for those who gave their lives, that that nation might live. It is altogether fitting and proper that we should do this. But in a larger sense, we cannot dedicate, we cannot consecrate, we cannot hallow this ground. The brave men, living and dead, who struggled here, have consecrated it, far above our poor power to add or detract. The world will little note, nor long remember, what we say here, but it can never forget what they did here. It is for us the living, rather, to be dedicated here to the unfinished work which they who fought here have thus far so nobly advanced. It is rather for us to be here dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that for these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion. That we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain. that we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth."
President Lincoln, thank you. Inside of the bags for each of the Student Citizens of the Month is a copy of those 272 most important words in American history. And there's extra copies out on the tables, you leave if you'd like some. We will continue and finish the last group, and then we'll be done. So Group Three, if you're in junior high or high school, please come on down. And Councilmember Daniels, please continue.
Thanks Mayor, from Camp Verde High, Jenna Woodbury. From Desert Hills High, Jalen Brown. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Peyton Mahoney. From Gilbert High, August Iono. From Gilbert Junior High, Raymond Dibble. Must be a tough homework night. From Greenfield Junior High, Maxwell Reynolds. From Higley High, Bobby Getz. From Highland High, Katie Arnold. From Mesquite High, Lacey Frann. Forgot to mark that down, we got Lacey. From Mesquite Junior High, Carly Cronwitter.
If we need to do any redos, we can do it in the break, but, okay, good.
From Perry High, Kennedy Richardson. From South Valley Junior High, Emma Stoddard. And from Williamsville High, Kathleen Murphy.
Is that our Group Three? Okay, Group Three, we'll do our picture together. This is where the council members, some of us, get on our toes a little bit. But we put you in the front row. A big round of applause for Group Three, thank you. Thank you again for coming out. For our Student Citizens of the Month, you're now dismissed. To take your family members somewhere to eat, ice cream, yogurt, you know, or go back home and do homework or other wonderful things. And for the school leaders, if you're able to stay, great. We'll begin our formal council meeting in the next few minutes, thank you. Welcome to our November 21st, 2013 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I officially call the meeting to order. We begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. Interested persons should contact the clerk for further information. The invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Tim Thompson of the Fountain of Life Christian Fellowship, after which Councilmember Cook will identify the individual who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We invite those who are here at council chambers to please arise, thank you. Pastor Tim.
Good evening, thank you Mayor Lewis for inviting me to come and do this. And thank you fellow citizens. Tonight is a great night, and it's wonderful to be able to be here again. I think it was a year and a half ago, I was asked to come and give the invocation. And those were times when our town was down, and we were, we had just suffered a 400% increase in violent crimes. And this was May the 3rd, 2012. And at such time, I gave the invocation in which I called upon the name of our God to come and to bring safety and wholeness to our community, to bring healing and health. And in the years to follow, in the months to follow, the years to follow, our community became the clean, safe, vibrant community that it is today. And I issued forth a challenge that we would not be defined by tragedy, but that we would be defined by the triumph of our rise. And we have become the clean, safe, vibrant community that we are today. Tonight, as we issue the proclamation or the invocation for this council meeting, I want to remind us as Thanksgiving is on our way, it is next week, and we are just a week away from giving thanks. This marks the 150th year of celebrating Thanksgiving in our land. And it is an enormous Thanksgiving holiday season, because since the first time that we celebrated Thanksgiving until this year, it is the first time that Hanukkah and Thanksgiving fall on the same date. And it will not happen again for 79,801 years. So let us not grow weary in giving thanks, but let us be thankful for it. We have many reasons here to be thankful to our God. So tonight, as we pray, let us go to God in prayer. God, you have given us overwhelming clarity, overwhelming resources in this region and in this land. You have protected us and you have been so good to us. And I thank you, God, for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. God, I thank you for the safety of our community and of our land. I thank you for the men and women that serve on this council, that have given of their time and of their energy and of their lives to govern and to lead. God, I pray that you would be with them, that you would speak to them. God, I pray that you would enlighten them and teach them and show them things that are way beyond their understanding, so that they can lead us in ways that we could have never imagined. God, I pray that you would continue to bless us, that we would continue to enjoy the richness of the community that we live in, the blessing that you have bestowed upon the businesses of our community. heritage that you have given to us and our children, the blessing that you have given to us in being able to watch them grow, and learn, and play. God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. And I pray that, that God, just as you have done in the years past, that you would continue to do, that you would continue to direct this town, this council, this region. God, that you would continue to have your hand be upon us, that we would continue to prosper in all that we set our hands to. We thank you, God, for the many blessings that you have given to us, for they have come from you. And Lord, we honor you with all that we do. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
I would like to invite Jennifer to the front, and she will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where allegiance stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. Well, Jennifer, can you say your name and how old you are?
You may be seated.
And what school you belong to?
My name is Jennifer Guzic. I am eight years old, and my school is Town Meadows Elementary.
Well, thank you very much. Jennifer's parents, Joe and Lisa, are very strong advocates of education. And you have a beautiful and wonderful daughter, and thank you for allowing her to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Can we have a round of applause for Jennifer?
Thank you. Our town clerk, Kathy Temple, will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Foreman is present.
For our first proclamation, we invite any of our school leaders, whether it's teachers, administrators, school board members, to please come forward. And just kind of to my right, our first proclamation tonight, and Joe will have you come forward, our first proclamation tonight is a proclamation declaring next month as our School Tax Credit Awareness Month. And we have had one of our great Gilbert residents, who has been the organizer, and the one bringing knowledge to all of us, and enthusiasm. And so, Joe Guzic, we thank you for that. We will be presenting the proclamation to you on behalf of all of the school leaders, our three school districts, 19 charter schools, three private schools, and homeschooling, just any type of education that's happening in Gilbert, we're celebrating with this proclamation. And then, I'll ask Vice Mayor Cooper to read the proclamation, have you make a comment about it, and then we're going to pass the microphone down to each individual here, and you can state your name, and which school you're at, and if you're a teacher, what grade, or school administrator, or school board member, and we'll just have everyone come forward, and then we'll do a group picture. So, Vice Mayor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas, the first schoolhouse was built in Gilbert in 1909 to serve the community, before Arizona was officially a state or Gilbert a town. Whereas, the town recognizes that education has been a key pillar in the town's success, and will continue to fuel the town's success into the future in many different ways. The town encourages all citizens to continually educate themselves, and pass on the power of education to all children each and every day. Whereas, the town of Gilbert proudly recognizes that Gilbert children are educated by three school districts, 19-plus charter schools, and three private schools. Whereas, the town of Gilbert formally recognizes itself as an "education-first" town. As an "education-first" town, the community embraces educational excellence and choice with the goal of ensuring that each of the town's unique and talented children will graduate with a 21st-century high school diploma, making each child career in college-ready, and ensure the future of democracy. And now, therefore, I, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim December 2013 as Arizona School Tax Credit Awareness Month in Gilbert, Arizona. And I urge each individual in the community to become more knowledgeable about the Arizona School Tax Credit donation that each Arizona citizen can make to a district, charter, or private school of their choice in Gilbert. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Thank you, Town Council. Thank you, Town staff. I truly appreciate everybody's effort in our town. I have to say, I've been inspired by many. And as I shared with the mayor earlier today, we are a Constitution town, we the people. We are a golden rule town, where we treat each other with respect and kindness, allow civil dialogue and debate. We are a four-hour city town, Gilbert-canned town, where we help each other when the need arises. We are a shop Gilbert town, where we spend our money where it helps the most. And now, we are the only village, borough, town, or city in the world that is an education community. The mission is simple: educate our children to ensure the future of our democracy. This is a beautiful proclamation, which gives you an opportunity to take tax credit, take your tax dollars, and keep them in this town. So with that, I encourage everybody in the month of November, and if simply, if 100,000 people give $10, that will be $1 million, $17.54 per child. And don't take my word, Councilman Taylor can speak how well these educators will spend that money and help our community. Thank you.
My name is Judy Smock Shannon. I teach Spanish at Gilbert High School.
Ray Webb. I'm the principal at Valvista Academy.
Lisa Locher-Gusick. I teach at Highland High School in Gilbert, and our kids really count, so give your tax dollars.
Jennifer Schaefer. I teach 4th grade at Oak Tree Elementary.
I'm Terry Locke, Director of Community Relations for Chandler Unified School District.
David Jeffers. I teach 6th grade at Plaid Delray Elementary.
I'm Tamara Ritter. I teach 4th grade at Patterson Elementary.
David Ashley. I teach American History at Highland High School.
I'm Jill Humphries. I'm a member of the school board.
I'm Terry Diaz, and I teach 4th grade at Finley Farms.
Big round of applause for this group, please. Come a little closer, we'll do a group picture. As noted on the agenda, there's a proclamation declaring November 2013 as the American Diabetes Month. There's also a proclamation, and I will ask, we may have a representative to receive this proclamation, but the Pulmonary Hypertension Month Proclamation. Do we have someone here to receive that? Our next proclamation is the recognition of the 150th year of the Gettysburg Address. President Lincoln, could you come forward, please?
Let's have you put that hat back on. This is Gilbert resident Clint Ritchie. And tonight, in our Student Citizen of the Month, he came as Abraham Lincoln. Two nights ago, he was Abraham Lincoln at the Community Thanksgiving Interfaith Music Celebration, and he told the history of what happened 150 years ago in the delivery of the Gettysburg Address. And then he recited 272 words that have been noted as some of the most important words in the American history. And so, tonight, in appreciation, we give to you a certificate of appreciation presented to Abraham Lincoln for attending the Gilbert Town Council meeting on November 21st, 2013, to present the Gettysburg Address to those attending the Student Citizen of the Month. Thank you for delivering what has been called the most important 272 words in American history. We join you in the recognition of the 150th anniversary of the Gettysburg Address, delivered by you on November 19th, 1863. A big hand for now Gilbert resident, President Abraham Lincoln. And in the Student Citizen of the Month, President Lincoln noted that the beard kind of fell off on the way here, and so, he decided a clean-cut shave, President Lincoln 150 years later, would be just most fitting. Councilmember Daniels, the last two special recognitions, tie to our veterans that we dearly love, and so I'll turn the mic right over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I saw Captain Sense is here tonight, and love to have him come down and help me make this happen. Captain Sense, also known as Councilmember John Sense, has been an integral part of our Veterans Day celebration in the town of Gilbert for many, many years. You can see his mark of organization and his skill set that keeps project management going when it comes to that event, so we appreciate that. We did have a chance this month to celebrate Veterans Day in the town of Gilbert. We have a short video that we'd love to show you.
Like the heroes before them, today, a new generation of men and women are fighting for freedom around the globe. Our soldiers fight and die, not for the glory of war, but for the prize of freedom. We, as a nation, must always honor and remember our veterans, not for them alone, but for the sake of our country and the promise of freedom for future generations.
That was our Gilbert digital team that put that together for us. We appreciate their efforts very much. I'm going to pass this microphone to Captain Sense, and he can help us do some honoring that needs to take place today.
Thank you. Oscar, please join me down here, and Carl?
As you notice, or may notice, the three of us have a medal around our necks, hanging on our... You don't have a tie. Okay. But all three of us are members of the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame, and I just had to give a couple talks last week. And since 2001, when the Hall of Fame was formed, there have been 287 people selected for the Hall of Fame. And that includes, or the criteria is, you must be a veteran that has served honorably in the armed forces. But the Hall of Fame, despite what you may think, has nothing to do with what you did in the military. It's all what you've done after your military service. And so, the three of us have been recognized for what we've done in our communities, after our military service, and with various organizations which we've been members of. So, actually, right here, you have 3/5ths of the Gilbert residents that are members of the Veterans Hall of Fame. There's a total of five of us in the hall that are Gilbert residents. Oscar, this is in recognition of your recent induction. And the other thing I should say before we get started, is we've got a diverse group up here. And you say, "Well, how diverse are you? You don't look diverse." Carl is an Army Reserve Colonel. Oscar, you were Army also. Oh, we're not as diverse as I thought. And then one Navy guy. So, but anyway, let me read this from Mayor John Lewis, and it says, "Congratulations, Oscar Frank Uria. As Mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my pleasure to extend congratulations to Oscar Frank Uria in recognition of his accomplishments in being inducted into the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame. The Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame Society recognizes Arizona veterans for significant post-military contributions on a local, state, and national level. Oscar Uria was chosen based on his unselfish commitment to serving others and his personifying the meaning of public service. Oscar is a veteran who demonstrates service to his community in many different ways. After completing an exemplary military career, he continued to generously give of himself by serving as a devoted volunteer for junior achievement, speaking to area students about skills, attitudes, and the means to utilize their talents in the world. As founder, president of in-country Vietnam veterans, Oscar led the efforts to build bronze monuments honoring veterans in numerous Arizona communities. He was also instrumental in launching the inaugural Veterans Stand Down for Arizona Homeless Veterans in a tent city on McDowell Road. As an active member of the Ira Hayes American Legion Post 84 in Sacatoon, Oscar manages the logistics for the annual February anniversary of Iwo Jima Flag Raising Parade and Flyover. It is with great pride that we pay tribute to Oscar Uria, a person of great integrity who exemplifies the values of the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame Society in every way. We acknowledge Oscar's lifetime service to his country and his community. He embodies the courage and patriotism that have kept our country free and strong. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council and the residents of our community, we applaud his extraordinary leadership and service. I'm proud to join with the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame in recognizing Oscar's achievements. We hereby commend Mr. Uria for his sharing attitude, excellence of character, and the honor he has brought not only to himself, but his family and community. The town and his residents are proud of Oscar and congratulate him on this much-deserved award. And witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the town of Gilbert to be affixed this 21st day of November 2013. Signed, John W. Lewis, Mayor." I just wanted to say one other thing. As President-elect of the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame Society, I am proud to have served with these two fine gentlemen, and the other 150 members, living members of the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame Society. So, Mayor, thank you very much.
Oscar, we met a month ago. Are these the two grandsons that... We better just have the family stand up and be recognized. Any family members?
Those are my daughter, Crystal, and Chino, and Michael and Brandon, my grandkids.
I, a month ago, on the Make a Difference Day, was doing my best to get to all the projects. I wasn't doing much to help, but I was surely appreciating and enjoying the chance to meet various residents. And there was Oscar with the two grandsons, doing their part to beautify our community. So, thanks to the two of you. Thanks for sharing, Grandpa. And congratulations. Carl and John, thank you for coming. Captain Sense. Vice Mayor Cooper, do we have requests on the communication from citizens?
No, sir.
Let me just confirm, in council chambers, if anyone wanted to speak under this part of the agenda. Okay, we'll move forward. The consent calendar on the agenda, items listed below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed to the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Cooper, what request do we have?
Mayor, as I make this motion, I note that item 13 has been removed, so I move that we approve items 8 through 26, pulling item 18A for discussion, and bringing item 34 forward as part of the consent calendar with a recommendation from Councilmember Ray.
I move that we appoint Scott Andring, Paula Hatch, and Bill Katz to the Public Facilities Municipal Property Corporation with terms beginning January 12, 2014, and ending January 1, 2017.
Thank you. With that motion, is there a second? Second. With the motion second, please vote. That's approved with a 7 of a vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, I noted 18A was the discussion item. Is that correct?
Mayor, I had that pulled because I will be recusing myself on that item. I'm a manager in VIP Custom Homes LLC, who is the owner of the property, being considered for final plat approval on that item.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, I move that we approve item 18A.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a 6 of a vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, consent calendar. We move to the public hearing. And I note that Agenda item 28, why don't we take care of that, please? We're going to continue that.
Mayor, I move that we continue item 28 until the meeting of December 12, 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a 7 of a vote. Thank you. Agenda items 27 through 32, excluding 28, will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. Comments will be heard from those in support of or in opposition to an item. Vice Mayor Cooper, do we have any citizens that wish to speak on these items?
Not that I know of, Mayor.
Okay. And to the council, to prioritize, do we have some discussion that any of you wanted to have on 27 through 32, excluding, as we mentioned, 28? Okay. I will open the public hearing on Agenda items 27, 28, and 29 through 32.
Not 28, correct?
Not 28. Oh, yeah, thank you. I will open the public hearing on Agenda item 27 and 29 through 32, and I will close the public hearing on Agenda item 27 and 29 through 32. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve public hearing items 27 and 29 through 32.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion second, please vote. That's approved with a 7 of a vote. Thank you. We move to Agenda item 33. This is related to our first quarter budget report. And is there a presentation or discussion?
Mayor, seeing none. Unless, I'm watching the staff look around, do we...
Is there a discussion that any of you wanted to have? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the first quarter budget report, especially with being so brief. No, that's not part of the motion. But I move that we accept the first quarter budget report.
Second.
Okay. With that motion second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a 7 of a vote. Agenda item 35, reports on boards, commissions, and committees, please.
Mayor, briefly, I just wanted to note for the rest of the council and for the public that last night at the Redevelopment Commission, a new leadership was appointed by you, and of course, you know about it. The new chair is Jim Torgeson, and the vice chair is Ryan Hamilton.
Thank you. Other updates. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I just wanted to share a great opportunity we enjoyed at our last Four City Gilbert meeting. Instead of our normal meeting, we went to the Gilbert Senior Center and did some ride-alongs to deliver homes, or deliver food to the homebound, and it was really a wonderful opportunity to get to greet those individuals and express our care for them. And I just want to share that and encourage anyone and everyone to become a volunteer to help with those deliveries, and for more information, you can go to gilbertcan.org and sign up. So, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels.
Mayor Lewis, next week is Thanksgiving, which we, of course, wish the community a very happy Thanksgiving. Beginning on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, is the Town of Gilbert's annual Festival of Trees, and that will be held at Santan Village Shopping Center, and we invite all members of the public to visit and bid on those trees that will be available decorated from all different community organizations and schools across the community. And so, we're grateful to have that. All proceeds will go to Gilbert Can, which was just mentioned, and that will go to support local programs for those in need. So, again, a great way to get involved this next weekend.
Thank you. I might, for those, anything else from council members? In our Student Citizen of the Month, we did display, and those who are here in council chambers can see, some upcoming activities that is part of Gilbert Days. And I do congratulate, by the way, last weekend, many on this council did run in the Gilbert Days Run. Some did the mile, some did the mile, some did the 5K, and we're all still alive, and it was a great event. And the next few days, we will be celebrating the rodeo, which will be on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Saturday morning, we invite the entire community and friends and family from all over the world to come to our Gilbert Days Parade, 9:00 AM. Rain or shine, the parade goes on. And so, that will be in downtown Gilbert this coming Saturday, and then other events will be noted in the newspapers, on our websites, of the Nights of Lights and Repairing After Dark that will take place in December. The parade coordination, I think, just quickly, we have a spot, and information's been given to the council with family members, and if there are any questions, I think Councilmember Daniels would be the go-to person for that. And then, as a reminder, back to the Festival of Lights, we do have assignments, and so, Councilmember Daniels is also helping coordinate that, and anything we can be doing to help, we'll talk to you after the meeting. Yeah, thank you. The Agenda item 39, report from Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report. I did want to thank the staff that put a lot of time and energy and effort into the Gilbert Festival. As everybody's aware, it had to be canceled because of the forecast for rain, 100% forecast for rain tomorrow and Saturday. They put a lot of time and energy into it, and it's a shame that our first red, white, and blue festival had to be canceled, but I do want to thank the staff that worked very hard on it.
Thank you. Agenda item 38, additional items from the council? Councilmember Cook.
Just a reminder of the challenge that I had from last council meeting to bring a roll of gift-wrapping paper for the Child Crisis Center. If you can leave it up at the office, that'd be great.
Thank you. I needed that reminder, and immediately, right? Or is there a window? We have a few more days?
I'll give you a couple more days.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. On the Agenda item 39, report for Mayor, I believe we've covered most of the items. I'll just add one or two more. The Tuesday night, we did have our annual Thanksgiving Interfaith Music Celebration. We thank all those who participated. It was held at the First United Methodist Church, and we thank the church for being a host. That's an organization that has been part of Gilbert from day one, and again, they were there. And Abraham Lincoln was there, with his beard on, to deliver the Gettysburg Address on that 150th anniversary. I also note that today, in council chambers, noon time, was the leadership forum. And I'll do my very best to give a brief summary. It's one of those meetings where you really had to be there to fully understand what occurred. The emphasis was on introducing executive leadership, and so, the lights went out as if you were at a Phoenix Suns basketball game, and the same music was playing, and the leadership came down one at a time. They were introduced, and then they had two individuals that we know in a different capacity in the police department, but they were as the emcees of a TV talk show. And right here in front, bow ties, hats, and everything, and then they had some guest speakers, Mike Hamblin and Rod Buchanan, some of our new members of the executive leadership. The rest of that, you'll just have to watch. It was taped, and so, you can see the details of that. They did a great job. There was a mascot contest, and it was Deputy Director Mark Sissipic that... There were 13 different mascots that were identified, and those in the audience had to decide which one best fit our Deputy Director, and I'll leave the rest for you to see. How's that for being clean, safe, and vibrant? And then finally, there was just a discussion about whether our Town Manager resembled more a ninja turtle... Or a ninja. That's right. It was just a ninja, just a ninja, or a pirate. And so, there was a discussion that went forward with that, and I think I'll just leave it at that, that you have to watch it to understand what occurred. It was all...
We felt like we were there, Mayor.
Okay. It was all completely clean, safe, and vibrant, as I said. And so, on that note, with our wonderful community that we're grateful for, we wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Meeting adjourned.